All right, seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Ginger? Okay. We're to open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll say seven oh one and close the public hearing. All right. Moving on down the list. Counsel consent agenda.
Okay. So I do want to say when the minutes from the March twenty-sixth meeting was published, I'm gonna do a correction on when I submit the minutes for this meeting. The motion I somehow left out, motion by Houston, seconded by Leonard to approve the FY twenty-six ambulance coverage for the city of Wyoming of eight thousand, did the roll call vote, motion was carried, and I assigned resolution twenty-three oh eight. And then items for next agenda, spring cleanup days, and then motion to adjourn by Houston, seconded by Scott, and then took the roll call vote and adjourned at six fifty-three. So I'm just gonna add that as a correction to the April eighth minutes that will be published. Just so you're all aware. And then also for the bills. On the bills, there's two invoices. I will issue checks once the Cawkins has a chance to approve them. But the one is Barker Communications for twenty-one six forty-eight. That one is not going to be paid yet because they're gonna discuss their budget and the amendment. And then the other one that I hadn't issued a check yet because waiting for his invoice was the Concrete Gone Wild for fourteen five. So I will get that. I added it on here just so we could approve it. So I will get that check issued and then, what's my, that's it. Those are the only two.
Okay. Motion to approve the Tuesday's agenda. Craig, do I have a second? Kevin? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Public works. Rod?
Only thing I got is basically the street list there. It always starts out high and then I got it whittled down to that. There he gave it to Steve there. But she said it, Cherry said it was maybe about sixty, so I can add a little bit.
Or you want me just to tell you what he took off?
But it doesn't matter.
The hydraulic for the back of the tractor.
Oh, no, I did, I completely forgot about it.
They got it down to sixty versus the ninety.
Yeah, so on the first page.
Right now I got it to about fifty-five. But again, a little bit.
He took off Summit Street. And then the last two. Both on Jones. On the next page, what it says is page three. Took off Prospect. I think that's Pine. The set, the, the next one is Pine from Maine to Jones. That's staying on, but the next two below that are coming off.
And Rod, I'll double check on that, too.
And then the, the last page, they, they call it, I guess, page four. He's taking off the first two. And then brings it down to fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents. Anything else, Rod?
Nothing else. Running pretty smooth. Weather ever streams out before I start raising some ambulances up. Other than that, I don't have anything.
When you gonna flush?
Probably the end of the month, probably somewhere. I forgot to have Terry put it in the.
I forgot all about it, too.
But probably a little bit here just to get some water flowing through.
We can have, I can have Brenda put something on her.
And do that, probably till the end of the month then.
Okay. Anybody got anything for Rod? If not, we'll move right along. Sheriff's report, we have the packet. City clerk?
Um, the lead abatement, I got that sent to the paper to be published. Um, I had to file for an extension with the state uh, for our June for FY twenty-four audit. That was for Hogan and Hanson. So that was done and approved. We started our training or our, what do you wanna call it, Brenda? They went, yeah, trainings for the new, the upgrade to the cloud. So we have stuff scheduled. Basically for the next couple of weeks and then they're gonna, they're looking at going live May first. But we might try and do it a different day that week.
Well, we got a mock bill, a mock billing and a mock payroll before that. That will go through.
So they'll test it to make sure everything is set up correctly and like with payroll, the billing. So they'll do a, like a live test of it. Um, I just added back on there, too, just as, um, so I talked to Dustin Klein about they wanting to put on the car show, the Y Saloon. And he gave me their own dates and I asked him about that. I'm like, they, a Thursday, and he said it should be, they were looking at doing a Saturday. Still kind of the same option. And I mentioned to him about the Cawkins, but I don't have too much money on using the Cawkins to park or. So I don't know if that's.
I don't think we can shut Main Street down.
I don't know how long the DOT.
That's the only thing I would worry about. If you shut Main Street down for that and whatever the cars, all the cars on Main Street, where everybody else gonna park?
Yeah. Um, because also I just, since, since we brought this up, there should be a permit that we do with the DOT. I'll have to look at that because we actually have to do the one, I don't think the one has been done for the fair parade yet.
No, I gotta do that, but I need, yeah. I'll be with you on that.
Where do we detour semis if they're loaded?
Uh, depends on how long they're talking.
I was just getting into, do we have any bridges besides?
I don't know why we couldn't just shut down right here and they could use that whole alley and then even shut down the back, back there.
The side street instead of the main street.
They wanted to get a liquor permit for outside. It would be, if anything, just.
There wouldn't be no.
Shut that street down, let them do it down there.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Well, cause gated off, yeah, where people can't come up through there and then that one alley and they get the whole back lot and the whole.
And maybe it'll be something I can see if he wants to come in and.
Talk, discuss.
And discuss. It would be easier, but I just threw that out there just 'cause he gave me the wrong date anyways.
Because like you said, if he does shut this down, then where's everybody else coming through Talat One to go to the car show? Where are they gonna park?
Yeah. Cause I think like for the, the fair parade and the homecoming parade, I think they hold the trucks since the parade lasts a half hour. And they just, I think they just sit on the street and they let the cars go down and around. I believe is what they do.
Don't they let the semis go down, down the street during, uh,
Christmas.
Christmas City?
Mm-hmm. I think they do. I think that bridge is rated for it. So they might send them all down around that way.
What did they do when they had the, um, motor, they had a bunch of motorcycles?
They had that huge motorcycle.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
It was, the whole thing was shut, cause you couldn't, it was all the motorcycles parked on Main Street. It was full.
Yeah, it was, uh, the hell, the place like the hot kit that they have.
Is it dirty or any?
Rump room, right?
Rump room, yeah.
But I, I think he also has to coordinate with the sheriff's department, too.
Yeah.
To get.
They, they do that at the rump room. They coordinate everything with the sheriff.
So.
I mean, I think if they shut this down, they're gonna lose business. I mean, if people go routing around, they might not stop. They might say heck with it, you know, if I gotta park a block away. I would put the cars.
I mean, I think it'd be all right deal, but like I said, I'm worried people gonna park.
I think you're gonna be parking a block away anyhow.
Right.
You can hold on parking up.
Yeah, that's just something to keep in the back.
I mean, we never did ask you, but like I said, unless you shut that from Laylows down to the ambulance shed down, you know, you can't shut it. You gotta leave the ambulants open, but to the alley, but how many are you gonna get? You're not gonna get that many cars there either, so I don't know.
Then have him come in and tell us what his plans are for sure.
Okay. Is that all you have then, Terry?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, we'll move down to number four. We'll just.
This will be four and nine.
Yes, so we're.
I'll fix for next time.
We have, I'm gonna have Terry tweak the way he, she does the agenda just a little bit, cause she's got some things doubled up. So basically, we'll discuss number four, we'll discuss number five, and then when we get down later, we'll actually pass the resolutions. Okay? Um, so basically, this one's gonna be discussion to hold a special meeting for fiscal year twenty-six budget adoption for April twenty-second at seven P M.
I've got a calendar in here, but I'm trying to flip it. There. It's Tuesday.
So two weeks. Any questions or concerns?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Do you want?
Meeting on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Yeah, to pass the.
Pass the budget.
Do you want it at seven? Do you want it?
Yes.
Yeah, probably, cause.
Okay.
It'd be better.
Okay.
All right, we'll move to the next one. Next one's gonna be the same thing. Discuss full-time benefits, adding dental vision, uh, request to add to public checks.
We're on the bill, are we on?
We're on the next one, about the dental and vision.
Yep.
I talked to Gina from Olin and asked her what they had down there. She said that they got a Aflac policy that has, uh, that the employees pay for a hundred percent.
Pay how much?
Hundred percent. And I don't know if the health is included, if they go through Aflac with the health insurance. I didn't ask her. Yeah.
My, so I only threw this out here because there is no dental, there is no vision. And one, to be able to even go, I went and to even go is ridiculous. Paying out of pocket. And so I only asked because I'm not, I'm not opposed to paying for having the dental and vision come out of my check, cause it's not a whole lot.
Is, uh, if you get a dental.
An Aflac, I haven't, she's been coming, gonna come and meet forever and I.
Okay. Now, what I mean is if they go through the city, is it cheaper than if you go through you?
See, I don't know. I didn't ask her, I just asked her if she could give me some, um, plan, like what's off, like city, plans that would be offered through a city. And so she said these are like the only ones. Which I can look to, to see.
That's, and like I said, I don't know, I never asked Gina to help and isn't, they go through Aflac through the health or this is just a different policy for vision and dental?
And I can.
That's just what she told me.
And I can check because, um, what's her name with Aflac? Uh, I can't think what her name is. But she's coming on Monday. So I can check with them.
Say if it's, there's a difference between going through the city versus individual and.
And we can, I mean, we can even table it and I can look and check what, cause like I said, I'll meet with her on Monday and then we have that special meeting then, too. And then we have another one in May.
I'm betting they got two separate ones, one there or not.
Huh?
I'm betting they are on two separate plans.
You have no idea. I, I didn't, didn't think they even asked her if their medical is on that part, right?
I like the idea of offering dental, vision and medical to full-time employees uh, as a package and, you know, be once and done with it, cause I feel like we, several times we've talked about medical and stuff and now we're talking dental and vision. So I'd like to just throw out an idea where we just have the full package to full-time employees and employees pay twenty percent, the city pays eighty percent.
Vision and dental?
Vision, dental and medical.
I know, I do, I have to, I'll have to pull it all up because I emailed, um, Clarence, I emailed, I emailed like several different ones and I can't remember if I, I thought I emailed Jean, too.
I'd like to see the numbers I'm doing there.
And I know, I know, I asked Stacia and OJ because so, kinda similar. And she said they offer, um, full ti, full-time employees get, I wanna say their medical or their health insurance is paid. And if they opt to not take it, they get a stipend is what they offer. But I'll let me.
If they don't take the health insurance, I mean.
Yeah, they get a stipend. I can't remember what she said it was. But I can do some more investigating on it and.
And, and see what the consensus is between the employees.
Yep.
What?
Who is, uh, our health insurance through?
Who is it?
Blue, Walmart, Blue康.
Do they carry vision and?
Yeah, it's right here.
That was an offer?
Is this the, is this the monthly rates or what, what it is?
This is, so if you look at here, this one really doesn't, yes, this is.
It's gotta be monthly.
Yeah.
This is monthly because I asked her, I'm like, is it monthly, weekly? She said monthly. So like your Delta Dental, if you look at that one, the employee rate is seven seventy-four, eight fourteen. If you add stuff, it gives, so that's like monthly.
Yeah. We're on the vision portion of it.
Or yeah, I did say dental.
Well, it's through Delta.
Yeah.
It's through Delta Dental, they just have Delta Vision.
Yeah. And then you have.
Walmart just offers the dental plan, but they.
And like some of, like the Walmart and.
Oh, Via, Via, Via Walmart. The Vises or, or bases.
Oh. I'd never heard of it and I didn't notice it said Walmart down there, but yeah. And then the, like your Walmart for your dental, that's like whole person. Yeah.
Well, like I said, I, I think we need that information, too, to see who wants what. And then if you can get, meet with that other gal and then.
Yeah, I meet with her on Monday in the morning, so.
And then you'll have time to put that together for the twenty-second.
Yep.
Any further comments? Moving on down, number six. Motion to discuss spring cleanup days.
And there's nothing, I didn't find anything on it and I asked Rod about it and he said he didn't think that they did anything last year.
I don't think we did either.
I think it's been two years.
Cause I, cause I was trying to find anything and everything. It's like I didn't see.
I thought, you mean the dumpster deal? Yeah.
We had that last year.
Yeah, I think we did.
Pretty sure we did.
We had it for one day. We had it for one day. One day on the dumpster, we had it for one day, we dropped it back here in the alley.
I think it was in the fall.
I think you're right.
Because that was, they were getting ready for Phyllis's sale.
Yeah, I'm, I.
Cause Ronnie was there.
I think it wasn't the fall, but I know for sure we had a dumpster back here. It was a one-day deal. They brought it in one day and picked it up the next.
Do you know who it was?
True Pleasners.
Was it?
Yeah, they're True Pleasners. They'll do that for pretty small.
We didn't go around and, we didn't have a group that went around and picked things up.
Yes, we didn't do the pickup like we had done.
But we put a dumpster out there, I just know it was there for twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Or forty-eight hour, I'm pretty sure it was just twenty-four, a one-day deal, but.
Well, if you could talk to.
If we could put it there on a, put it there on a Friday and they can come pick it up on a Monday, that way you got all weekend.
Is that included appliances or?
We don't have to be around.
Right, but you gotta be careful, too, if they throw the wrong stuff in.
What are they gonna put that, they keep there that long, they have to put the garbage in it.
True. That's the only problem.
I have one comment I'd like to make. It's been quite a few years where we did the go-around and wondered about some of these older people, whether they can even get things to the dumpster. That's just a thought.
They get called the city, or call here, maybe we get some of the guys out, Rod and Levi.
If they know that.
Put something in the newsletter or on the TV channel, I mean.
That's what we did last time because I actually, a couple of times, two years in a row, I took a day off and then borrowed a dump trailer. And we just took that around and we picked up that stuff and put it in the dump trailer and then I just donated it all. The bill came to the city, but I donated my time and the gas to do.
You and ICORN and somebody else wasn't doing that?
That was about three or four years ago when you guys did that. I never. It's probably.
Justin, my, my son Justin may have helped, if he had the day off of school. But yeah, Jim did it and then it was Rod and Levi and it was like the four or five of us that did it.
I like the deal, just putting a dumpster back there for one day and put on the TV channel if you need assistance.
Yeah.
Schedule the pickup time.
Everybody will be calling.
Whatever.
I doubt they'll even see it.
Probably not.
How full was the one last year?
I don't remember. It was pretty full, I think.
See, it sticks in my head that we had to get in, we had two of them back there.
No, it was just the one.
Well, what are you?
It was just the one.
What are you thinking for one day? Do you want me to call Pleasners and?
Yeah.
And then what are we thinking for like what day?
June first or August first? Give them a little time.
I, I would say maybe in May. Once it's getting a little warmer.
You wanna get it on the TV or the?
Right, right. Well, we'll have a meeting in two weeks. So.
This is May?
Yep.
Thank you, Vienna.
Um, you know, we could do it like the week of the nineteenth.
Isn't that graduation?
No, it's after, the nineteenth is a Monday. It's the day after.
When is graduation?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth. You know, so, you know, we could do it the, the week of the, just that week, we could do it the twenty-first or something like that. We'd have to see what Pleasners could do.
I would say maybe even move it into June, maybe.
Well, we could do it the week after.
Week.
Give people a little more time.
Let them see when we did it, or ask Pleasners if they remember the date.
Maybe just try to stay with the same date every year.
You'll have to ask what their visibility is, too.
And actually.
Well, was it the fall last year, but.
If they get into, people get into a routine that they know it's gonna be here at this time of year, you don't have to.
Right.
Well, they put it in that telephone.
Yeah, we have, they'll do that.
We can do that. Brenda, I bet she'll post it for us, too. And then if we get it on, figure it out on time, we can put it in the newsletter.
There you go.
And then.
When do you send those out?
Uh, probably, what's it, last week in April?
Okay, so if we make our official decision on the twenty-second.
I'll get the info and have it for the twenty-second.
There you go.
Okay. Discussion.
Perfect.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, moving on down, motion to discuss prosperity at two twelve East Jones. Any quotes been received for the cost of tear down? What sounded like from Doug that they had paid?
They never paid the judgment, have they?
It says the city could execute on the property, force its sale, the city to be paid towards the judgment upon sale. We don't know what other judgments are out there, mortgages, et cetera. Before executing on the property, it would make sense to purchase a title report from one of the abstract companies.
Didn't it say in here that somebody bought it on a sheriff's sale or something?
They did, but someone on the owner's behalf redeemed the tax sales certificate.
Oh.
So that means that company, somebody paid them.
So kinda like the property owner kinda wants to keep it.
Okay.
So, and we have ninety days from all certified regular notice redeemed from tax sale millions. We got new one sent, so this one's dated March twenty-sixth. Got ninety days. Ninety-day notice date will begin once the affidavit is received by the treasurer, so.
To me, it makes sense to do a title report and then I would execute on the property and force its sale to pay, because they owe us sixty-five hundred dollars. They've not paid on that judgment yet.
What's a title search cost?
Two hundred bucks approximately is what he put in here for.
I doubt there's probably anything else on it, but you never know without.
You never know.
That might be why they bought that back. Cause they.
Don't know.
Or they're just trying to stall us off.
Could be, but that's my recommendation is that we do the, we do the, uh, we do the title report from one of the companies and then we execute on it and force its sale because they owe us sixty-five hundred dollars.
I make a motion. Yeah. I make a motion to spend the, to, to, get it, find out.
To go that route?
That way, that way everybody knows what it is, what's going on there.
Okay. And then depending on what the report says, proceed that with the execute or force it sale?
Mm-hmm.
Craig, do I have a second? Lee? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yep.
Lee?
Yes.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, motion to discuss nuisance property, or discussion about the nuisance prosperity at three oh four West Jones. There is, um, latest.
If I just took those today, I sent them over before we left.
Pictures?
And this picture here, I'm not sure if they plan on burning all that stuff or what that is.
Are they burning right now?
This has got like a, did he say a wheelchair or something is in here? And it's all leaned up and it's all like pushing in on that fence because of so much junk between that. Yeah.
Well, I can stop at their house after the meeting and show them where the sun sets. I think we definitely need to send them a letter and I'll go knock on the front door and just say, hey, doing a friendly reminder and.
Is it one of those that?
They'll be hearing from the city later.
Do I send a letter or do I let the guys go post it on the door like we post?
Can I do the same thing? For now, and if they don't do nothing.
Send the letter?
Yeah.
Cause sometimes just talking to somebody gets, gets you a little ways further, but it probably won't matter this much.
Well, you might as well stay out of it right now, just do the letter thing, I think, leave you out of it.
I don't mind. But maybe they'll run. Cause nobody wants to live next door to that. Oh my.
No, I'll tear you up here.
So, motion to send the letter? Is that what we're doing? Kevin? One second. Craig? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, resolution to set the public hearing for, for the twenty-six budget adoption, April twenty-second at seven P M. Just the new motion.
I'll make that motion.
Ginger, do I have a second? Kyle? We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger?
That letter that they're sending out, is that certified or is that a letter?
I would certify it so that way you make sure that you get it received.
Cause otherwise they'll just say, oh, we didn't get it.
Didn't get it. All right, uh, number ten. All right, uh, number ten, uh, resolution to, uh, approve a one-time surfe fee adjustment granted at fifty-three. Oh, to amend the one-time surfe fee adjustment from fifty-five thirty to sixty-eight ninety.
Yeah.
How come, did you?
Yeah, what was?
It was, um, 'cause Sherry did the adjustment, and when she looked at it, she looked at it wrong.
Oh, so it was just a clerical?
So, so basically, this is what was on the, um, resolution, was the fifty-five thirty, so we're just amending that it'd be sixty-eight ninety, so we're just crediting her the difference that she hasn't been credited, but I just wanted to correct the amount, the total.
Okay, motion. Okay, that's Kyle, do I have a second? Lee? Okay, roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
All right, so number eleven, we basically tabled, uh, resolution to approve twenty-five, twenty-six EMC insurance blanket bond.
Is that that seventy-five thousand dollar thing?
So, that's like a total, but right now, the amount that's on the bills to pay was thirty-three thousand of that, because we got a, two fire trucks are coming off, a Hawkins trailer's coming off, ambulance, and the buildings will be paid yet, so that includes the buildings in that as well, but we gotta wait, we're waiting for the breakout for that one.
Looks good to me, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ginger, do I have a second? Craig? Take roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Craig?
Yeah.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay, uh, resolution to approve adding Terry and Brenda, and removing Rochelle.
That's for, oh, God, that's for the credit card.
Oh, for the credit card, okay.
Sorry, I didn't finish.
Didn't finish that.
EMC, or not EMC, good, what we're.
The city credit card. Motion approved, Craig, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ginger? Take roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Craig?
Yep.
And Ginger.
Yes.
Okay. Moving through the next agenda.
I just have the personal rate increase on there.
Okay. Anything else for the next agenda?
Besides the Pleasners, the season one, all of that.
And the insurance stuff?
The insurance stuff.
Well, we might not have that by April, though, wait, in two weeks.
What, the, for the?
Oh, for the dental, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of the rest of the building break down.
And the build, that's why Sherry just, she's like, it would be best for that one, for the EMC insurance, to just get the one portion paid, because the other will take a little bit to get the building to break out.
Okay, anybody have anything else? If not, how about a motion to, uh, Craig, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ginger, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.